Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, May 22, 2018, now called to order at approximately 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meetings? There being none, please rise and join us in salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda this evening is for discussion, the applicant is Karen Janice, requesting for waivers, a request for waivers for site plan approval to operate a childcare center within a pre-existing daycare facility under Section 3.2.3.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 73 Jerome Ave. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you come up and sit down? Are you going to present for yourself?
Sure.
Okay. Matt will be back in a minute, so give it a couple of minutes, please.
Sir, Mr. Chairman.
This is the applicant, Karen Janice.
Yes, sir. So what we have before us is a request for waivers for site plan review, a request for waivers for the public hearing, and associated waivers for topography, lighting, landscaping, site plan by our engineer, drainage calculations. What this is, is a, this used to be the former site of Paket Chau Acres daycare, and the applicant is looking to resume the same use for a childcare center on the property without proposing any exterior modifications to the building footprint or the parking lot.
Okay. Why don't you tell us what you're going to do a little bit?
Sure, sure. My plan is to oper, operate a full-day childcare center at a pre-existing childcare facility that will be licensed by the Department of Early Education and Care. The children will range from 1 month to 6 years old. There is definitely a need in the community, and there is several waiting lists. There is also a shortage and need for quality infant toddler care in the community. Several centers have recently closed, including the center that I'm currently a director at. We have been open for 28 years, so I would like to relocate these families to the Town of Auburn because they have been experiencing a hardship to find childcare for their families. There is definitely a need for full-day option for working families who work full-time. Most centers do not offer full-day, full-time openings for preschool-aged children. They offer nursery-school hours. I would be grateful to be approved tonight to meet my goal of opening this childcare center by July 9, 2018. Thank you.
Matt?
Okay, so what we have, I'm just pulling up the images on the screen. So you have a plan that was submitted by the applicant. It's the original site plan from 2003 when Paket Chau Acres daycare was constructed. There isn't striping then, there wasn't, there isn't striping now. The owner of the property put on some handwritten parking stalls to show, I believe it's 12 or 13 spaces.
How many parking spaces did they have in the original plan?
The original plan didn't allocate parking spaces. It just showed asphalt. So what we have, we reviewed this internally with multiple town departments as part of, not an official DCG meeting, but an internal meeting of folks that comprise the development coordinating group. Our recommendation from our town engineer was that the applicant provide a striped parking plan stamped by an engineer to ensure that there's adequate parking for the property. And also, since it's in a residential neighborhood, that the waiver for public hearing is not granted for the reason that you want to notify or butters of a public hearing. How the business is coming to that site. That's the recommendation from the town.
Well, I could see that we, there probably should be a need to line the parking spaces. I don't know if there's a requirement for handicap woods in there.
The, I believe it's after 10 spaces you need to release.
So, and you said you thought there was probably 12 spaces there?
There's, currently, I would say 13.
Yeah.
I should mention in the past, Mr. Chairman, I believe there's an understanding that when Paket Chau Acres operated this site, a lot of the kids were brought to the site by bus and weren't delivered by individual cars so that, what, traffic to be a little less? I learned that yesterday, so I'm just relaying what I, what I was told. I don't know if that's-
So you mean they were delivered individually?
Yeah, you can see the little-
By their parents?
You can see the little school bus van from seven years ago.
So you're saying they, they got brought together on a van? A van picked them up and delivered a group?
There was at least that service available.
Okay, and you're not going to have that?
Correct. But, through the chair, is that how they were all delivered, or just?
Some of them.
Okay, some of them, okay.
Not all of them. All I remember is when this was operating, there was never any problems. I don't recall any problems with anything that ever happened there. And, you know, and I don't remember any opposition from the neighbors or any of that, but I would like to see the parking lot striped, but that's, go ahead, Wendy.
Chair, I just lost my train. I was just going to answer the question, but I'll get, go to Scott, and then I'll get back to it.
Scott?
I honestly don't see the need for striping for this particular use if it's a lot of drop-off. Yeah, that's my only comment.
And you have fine wood waving and public hearing, any others?
Just a couple of questions. How long has the old daycare center been closed? Had to be fairly recently.
Um, I know it's under two years.
You filed within the, uh-
I did, yes.
-three-year time period.
So, how many cars are going to be there during the day? Or?
Four or five staff cars, correct.
So the other cars are coming in, dropping kids off, and leaving?
That's right.
I really don't see any to strike the parking lot either, to be honest with you. And you only operate in between, what are the hours of operation?
Like 7 to 6.
7 to 6.
Yes.
And how many children?
Licensed for 36.
The only thing I would say is that the walkways coming in and out of the house would have to be lit, you know, there's a floodlight or whatever, I don't know, but other than that.
Yes, yeah, and that would be required through Department of Early Education.
Do all 36 come at, like, are they all going to be there at 8:00 in the morning, or at-
No, they would have staggered times.
Staggered times?
Yes.
With that, then, I, I think I'm all right with it, the way it is. Scott, again, you-
That's all I got.
I'm all set.
Nothing has changed with the zoning.
Not, it's been-
It's been less than two years, and I don't see any need for, you know, public hearing, or even the striping, honestly.
Yeah, it's a pretty wide-open lot.
Yeah.
You're going to fall into the gate?
It's a great reuse of the-
Let kids out, take off.
Yeah.
I'm sure the personnel's going to park always on the left, there will be white and red car.
Do I have a motion? Oh, is there any public comment? I'm sorry.
Oh, we don't need to.
It's a waiver request.
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to, for the waivers, to waive the site plan and the-
To waive, to approve all the waivers?
Approve all the waivers, yeah.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
So we'll-
Get unanimous.
I will put together a letter for you this evening, and it'll be for the, for the admin staff tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Thank you, thank you. It's exciting, yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Continue, continue, continue with questions, but I didn't, continue, and, uh-
That'd be good.
We're not going to even talk about that one.
Well, that one always comes when Paket Chau comes. The second item for discussion on tonight's agenda, the applicant is First Worcester Pentecostal Church, request for waivers of site plan approval to operate a church within an existing church facility under Section 3.2.3.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 188 Oxford Street North. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Could you come up to the table and state your name and-
Mr. Chairman, let's go rise first. We have is a request for waivers of 188 Oxford Street North. This used to be Saint Joseph's Church before, Saint Joseph's Church. Now, this is the, this building has been empty for some time. It's next door to the rectory here. What we have is a request for waivers, public hearing, site plan, topography, lighting, landscaping, drainage. The proposed use is also a, another church. It's the First Worcester Pentecostal Church. Pastor Nick Gonzalez is the applicant for First Worcester, and we're dealing with a pre-existing non-conforming church property that meets the requirements of not only the Dover Amendment for Protection for Religious Uses, but also the requirement against the pre-existing non-conforming parking requirement, which we cannot hold a church or a pre-existing non-conforming use to minimum parking standards, but we can still ensure that adequate safety and access is provided to the property, which is why we're here today.
Do you have, can you put it up on the screen there?
Yes. Give it, um, for Mr. Gonzalez to discuss the, his business and his church. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, why don't you present what you'd like to say?
Thank you, thank you. My name is Nicholas Gonzalez, Jr. I'm the pastor of the First Pentecostal Church of Worcester. The church has been in assistance in the city of Worcester for about close to 30 years. I have been in Worcester for not quite two years yet. I was transferred here. The church is located at 91 Stafford Street currently, in a downstairs basement part of a bling-bling store on Stafford Street, and that's why we're seeking to have our own church building. The church building that has, Saint Joseph has stopped using for quite a few years. We would love to, of course, it has been empty for quite a few years, so we need some tender loving care, and we would love to give that tender loving care to be able to use it as our church. My church organization is an international organization, that we are, have churches around over 60 countries in the world. Our regional offices are in New York City. Our regional overseeing committee has approved that we would purchase this building from the Saint Joseph Parish, and our international office are in San Juan, Puerto Rico, and they have approved that we will purchase this building from the Saint Joseph Parish. Father Bamba, who's the priest at the church, is here with us to support, and we are not planning on doing any changes to the building. We just want to bring it up to, to speed. Of course, it needs some paint, some kind of loving care inside. We'll need to, there's some walls that are cracked because it hasn't been heated for quite a few years, and we would repair the walls and paint it. And in the back area that, right now, it's open like a basketball court, so to speak, we will put meeting rooms back there, and, and that's about it.
Did you have a structural engineering test on it, or anything like that? Did you do any of that?
No.
And the property line is, I see it here, could you, can you put the property line on that, can you show or talk to us?
Right through the building, yeah.
I know that it's right here, it's just 10 feet off the building.
We have made some arrangements with the, with the priests, with the Catholic Church, and they would rent us a, we have already an agreement for a rental of about 32 parking spaces in the rear of their parking lot, which they have a huge parking lot behind the rectory.
Behind the rectory?
Yeah, well, you can see it on the map.
How many spaces are behind the rectory?
Well, there's lots. They would rent to us 32.
We have at least 50 back there.
Not much more than 50.
Yeah, it's close to 100.
Talking behind the rectory, not the church.
So you have two cars?
Yep.
So there's a scale?
Yeah.
Like more than 50.
It's a huge parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, just want to relay an internal meeting similar to the previous waiver request. We reviewed this internally with the town engineer, fire department, and several other town administrative leaders, and one of the recommendations is that if the board doesn't grant the waiver for the public hearing requirement, because you want the neighbors to be able to weigh in on this project. And the other recommendation is for a striped parking plan similar to the last application. One of the concerns-
That will show designated parking spaces for this church and not being able to be used for the Saint Joseph's Parish itself.
Yeah, actually, we wanted to condition it that way, I suppose.
Oh, you're just going to name X amount of spaces, and it's a free-for-all?
Sure, and one of the other concerns that we had was this being used as a means of vigorous, and Pastor, Pastor Gonzalez and I talked about trying to stagger mass times with Saint Joseph's so they're not on both at the same time, but what we're talking about is this still being an exit, making a-
It's a critical intersection.
Four-way.
That's going to, yeah.
So that it's not regulated now, I don't believe there's-
And that driveway on the left side of the 194, the original rectory is-
Correct.
Not really, it's, if it's too wide, it's just barely.
Yeah, so ultimately, there was some concern about the intersection in combination with the use.
Do you, are your masses going to overlap, or be uncommon with you?
No, we're going to stagger so that when they have their mass, that we will not hurt our service.
Our last mass here is 9:00 at, at the church. Our 10:30 is up here at, uh, Central Street.
So on Sundays, you have masses at the original church across the street, at what time?
7 and 9.
7 and 9, and then-
We're done by 10, because I've got to be here at 10:30.
And our services at 11:00.
Yeah, through the chair, just ask a question to Father Bamba, about, how about funerals and stuff on the same day? Be a different schedule over there? Even weddings, for that matter?
Funerals, he could use the spaces that he's definitely going to, that he'll rent from us, and so that should not be an issue, because we only use the parking on the church side of the street, our church side of the street, for a funeral.
Okay, thank you.
So for your funerals, you're only parking a big lot by the brick church?
And on the street, on the streets.
If you, and are you going to put, planning to put designated spaces for this church that's always for their use only?
Where the woods are in the back of the lot, I will give him two rows coming out, and I'll put a line down that says, "Don't cross that line," to my people.
Now, is that on the original pavement that exists there? You're not planning to go back further and do any-
There is pavement there, yes. My people presently do my part there, so that's why it's real easy for me to say.
They don't park at all in back of the rectory?
Yes, they do.
But-
They don't go beyond my garage.
You're saying along the driveway. There's some cars up front here. I should mention this, Chairman, that originally when this came in, there were some parking stalls shown in the front of the building, which Mr. Coyle, town engineer, and I agreed that that's, those should not be marked parking stalls, because folks would be backing off into the road to get out of there, so that would be, that would create a dangerous situation. So I relayed that to Mr. Gonzalez, and we, they were removed on another plan that just gave me the aerial without the markings. There are two, it seems, marked handicap stalls along the side of 188, but, yeah, that's, that's all that exists there now, but there wouldn't be any parking in the front.
Anything else? Anything else? Scott?
Uh, what's up?
Couple of questions. We were all led to believe that that building was condemned. It was unfit for human habitation, that's why they shut down the basketball league, what, 12 years ago? So it's not structurally unsound, because that was the report that came out through the parish?
As far as I know, it's never been condemned, and I have found nothing that says it happened.
It was found to be structurally unsound when they shut down the basketball league.
Probably for basketball.
I'd say for, that's why the Boy Scouts don't go there anymore. Same thing. I just don't want somebody to get into the, get into something, and then you see all the repairs, and you're out all this money. You know, if it's fine to occupy, and it just needs, you know, 10 and 11 care, great, but as far as traffic control, I would suggest that it's one way in and one way out. When you come in alongside the old church, one way in, and when you come out, the upper driveway, by the rectory, right turn only.
Stay out of the intersection.
Stay right out of the intersection. You won't, because, you know, when mass gets out at Saint Joseph's on Sunday, it's, especially at Christmas and Easter, it's a nightmare getting through the intersection. I mean, the poor crossing car, that's what's happening.
So you're saying, come in on the right side of the rectory, between the two buildings?
Yep.
And then you exit through the upper driveway?
Correct.
I thought that that was kind of-
It's the other way around currently.
Should be the opposite way to get you out of the intersection.
I mean, in the past, through the chair, as you guys know, there wasn't a stop sign there, so it wasn't a contention current in the past, so now that that becomes such an issue, it makes sense to reverse it. Yeah, I just want to remind the board that, and for the condition, any sort of approval here, that's something we can do with waiver requests. So if you're looking at conditioning anything, then you have to deny the waiver and ask for public hearing, and then render a decision.
So you're saying we deny the waivers, ask for public hearing, and then make a decision with possibly conditions?
Yeah, if you want to do conditions, you just can't do them as, as a requirement of a waiver.
This is actually a question from Father Bamba. How long has that building been closed and unheated?
As far as I know, 10 years.
10 years. And it's been unheated all of that time?
It's, in, in the last five years, I know it has not. Before that, I, I don't have a record.
And it falls under the purview of the building inspector?
And the fire department?
And the fire department, because, and I'm with John, let the buyer beware. I don't know if you've had any kind of inspection or anything, but-
I would suggest that.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding of it, too, that it had been condemned. I was surprised it hadn't been demolished by now, but, um, and are they, will those stairs remain in the front, the way they are now?
They're going to fix them. There'll be repair.
There'll be repair.
Although our interest is going to be through the sign, not through the front.
Right.
But just not to change the look of the building, just repair them.
Too much, yeah.
So they would look nice.
The facility, through the chair, in some capacity would require handicap access. It currently has not.
To answer your question about demolition, there was a plan to demolish the building, however, the Historical Society of Auburn stepped in and gummed that, stopped that from happening for a while, but then I understand they've, they've relinquished, they are no longer trying to keep it as a historical building.
Could have been maybe due to the cost of repair, but I don't know if we can, what I'm concerned with is just any liability to the town, that if we have any approval involved in this, and it is not structurally sound or safe, and do, is there any kind of a purview that we can require the building inspector to review it, or to have a structural engineering study done, or something like that?
The board could through, can do any of that through a public hearing. You could also do it as a condition prior to issuance of building permits, but again, just can't condition-
So the best way probably is to-
Deny the waivers.
Deny the waivers, and have a public hearing, and then notify neighbors, and then, at that time, we can discuss what we might do, and we can have set conditions, and, you know, if that all comes out, then you're able to go ahead. Maybe it's still feasible to do.
Please or not, it's for your own protection. I don't want to see you get in trouble.
Mr. Chairman, does the board have any specific request of the applicant that they could provide in, in the interim before the June 12 meeting?
Well, I think it seems like the two pastors are working together on the parking, and that seems like something you can resolve if, if it comes, and the time on the masses, alternating, and staggered, and then funerals, and that seems like it may not be an issue. It, if, you know, and that, that would be between them. If it becomes an issue, then they have to change their agreement.
One question, though, is that something that is negotiated between the two of you, or is it with the Worcester diocese?
We can do that.
And it's-
We can do that.
Okay, so it's nothing that's carved in stone, and say Father Bamba moves on, what happens then?
Well, we'll have to condition it, that it, that it's almost like a deed condition, but what, not on-
Through the chair, they provided us with a draft memorandum of agreement, just between, it's signed by both parties, excuse me, for the use of two rows of parking, 32 spaces behind the rectory. It has to be something that's recorded with their-
Yeah, recorded with the plan.
Right, with their deed.
Right, so it's a time period.
What time?
Yeah, that doesn't, that, that's one of the comments I was going to make, is this looks like it's in perpetuity, because there is no time period, so, but, again, regarding the actual public hearing, is there, when I'm looking at the plan, what more does the board want to see? Do we need a circulation pattern?
Well, on their particular parcel-
Traffic pattern, yeah.
Yeah, traffic.
We, there's no, they can't have any parking, really, because we don't want it out in front. We need to see the pat, traffic flow, which would be on the original rectory, and the patent, where it comes around the designated parking spaces that you're saying you were going to give them the two rows, and whatever, down there, the wood line, and up into the corner where the old barn used to be, way down in the left-hand corner, and then, uh, little patent. Scott, is anything you'd like to see, or-
I'm in agreement with those.
-so that they can get it, and they won't have to come back if we've got-
Yeah, I'd just like to see the, make sure the parking's set out, and then the, the traffic patterns, if there's, we have some definite concerns out front, that stop sign.
John?
Yeah, just, one of the conditions would be the traffic pattern. You go in next to the old church and come out next to the rectory, right turn only.
Come out on the upper side to avoid that.
Right, and then right turn only.
Which is a suggestion.
Yeah, it's-
Can't enforce it.
Well, if, if you're bringing waivers, it's a suggestion, yeah, but it's, yeah, and the question becomes is, what are we looking at to determine that? We're looking at an aerial photograph.
The hearing will give us the time to request some of those things with, which will make, should make every, relieve everybody on to what the concerns about the building are. The topography, I think, is, when we get to the hearing, that stuff's okay, or, you know, you know, do you have night activity, or?
Yeah, we have evening services on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay, so we might want to just look at some kind of lighting, a little bit of lighting.
Lighting plan, yeah.
Is there any out there?
Pardon?
Is there any lighting, existing lighting?
Is there, Father?
Yes, yes.
And if you, if we, when we come, we'd want to probably see some of that on the plan, too, where the lights are, so we can-
Lights are in the back of the rectory.
Lights are in the back of the rectory.
Site plan prepared by a professional, yeah, we, they don't have to come with it, not necessary. Drainage, not necessary. Others, please list, there's none. So just to get the hearing and to get started and then set some conditions that we all in general like to see.
So make the motion to deny?
Is there any public comment? Father, anything else?
There may be, Mr. Chairman, maybe some waivers you consider granting. You have, we're not changing asphalt here, so I don't think you need...
Wouldn't we do that at the...
Well, we could grant some of the waivers now, so he's not required to put those on in engineering the plan. So like topography and drainage calks are two things that are completely...
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe even landscaping.
Landscaping doesn't, we can waive that. Lighting, we just want to have you show it on the plan.
Yeah, what this lighting waiver is for a photometric plan.
Excuse me. Can I, the chair, are we going to waive the landscaping requirement?
If the board wishes.
You shouldn't. This is an opportunity to, you know, make the fun of that. I don't know.
Just for right now, just so that they can eliminate, the landscaping isn't a big deal. They might have to come back twice anyway, so. Topography...
But if we grant the waiver, there will be no discussion about landscaping.
Topography, we can do, and drainage calks. And on the other, there was none asked. You need the site plan by a professional engineer.
For the chair, some of the landscaping could eliminate, you know, that business about people pulling in and trying to park in front of the building.
Because they'll probably try to do it anyways.
That's right. That's why I'm saying if there was some kind of a, whatever, to prevent that...
They're just pulling in front of the church.
This might be the opportunity to do it.
Because that's what I always did, even though it was no parking.
I guess to support both points, I guess, is don't grant that waiver here. And the applicant can request waivers with the formal application.
Grant which one?
If they wanted to. But at least we still keep that discussion.
No, we won't do. We'll do topography and drainage calks. If that's okay with everybody? Scott?
Yes.
John?
Get rid of the site plan prepared by a professional engineer, too.
But we're going to want a plan.
I think we still need to see the parking stalls and the circulation.
That's the plan that we'll record with the registry of these.
Well, these don't get recorded, it's a site plan review. Keep in mind, we're not talking like approved and denied, obviously, we're just talking design. So it's, as far as the parking and the circulation, keep in mind that this parcel is separate and it's looking at being sold to a different entity. So 100 years from now, you have to consider that one does not have its own parking lot. So having a professional, or at least some form of plan that shows those parking spaces, that it's firm, that it's...
It'll be important.
It'll be very important.
Okay, so I suggest that we waive topography and drainage calculations.
Make a motion to waive topography and drainage calculations.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. So you don't have to include them on.
And I make a motion to deny the others, lighting, landscape, site plan.
And public hearing.
And public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Make a motion to deny the public hearing or waive the public hearing or keep it in place.
Deny the waiving.
Deny the waiver.
Yes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what this means, fortunately, there's three weeks between this meeting and the next meeting. And as I, as we spoke about, tomorrow can buy town halls, deadline to advertise for that meeting. So come visit the assessor's office for the orders list and come see Sheila for the advertising. Post a public hearing for June 12th with some of the requirements that we just discussed here today, at least seeing a plan that shows the parking stalls on site. Maybe someone within the diocese that donated their services, that's an engineer, that might be able to do that for you guys. But at the same time, the intersection posted, very interesting challenge with two churches on the same site, the town administration, town engineer specifically requested that this was made very clear with the plan. So if you wish to proceed, that's the manner, the manner in which to do it.
Showing the parking, the floor plan, the spaces, some lighting and some landscaping proposed for out in front of the youth center.
So Sheila Conroy from the office can walk you through the whole thing. She's already been told that it's possible between the first item today, including this one. So just get in touch with her. I'll have her, your information on her chair, so she'll be able to reach out to you.
And he has your number.
Yes, well, I'll be a few states away tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to excuse myself.
Okay, we're closing. Oh, it's, yeah. You think that actually works out, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
I think it's perfect.
That would be awesome. I didn't even think of that, but you did. Goodnight, guys.
Thanks. You, too.
All right, next on the agenda is we have a public hearing at 7:00 PM. The applicant is Total Outdoor Corporation requesting site plan approval under section 4.5.10.5 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the installation of two double-sided digital off-premise billboard signs adjacent to the Mass Turnpike at the rear of the Auburn Mall property located at 385 Southridge Street. This was continued from May 8, 2018 per applicant, but I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'd like to motion open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, but we had understood there were going to be four members of the board sitting tonight. Could I have five minutes to just talk with my client about whether to proceed?
Mr. Wangden?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to take on any other items to the agenda?
Want to do the minutes? Of three, minutes of 3/27/18 and 5/8/18. And I believe they're in the packet?
Yep. Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 27.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of 5/18?
5/8, May 8.
5/8, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 8.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Associate member? We all know what that is. Additional content matters?
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman. We do have a decision.
Next meeting is June 12th. I don't know. Signatures for 4:30 Rochdale Street.
So...
Swed development.
I do have a decision ready this evening, and I did circulate it to the members. I made a couple of minor changes and it was ready.
You were going to send it electronically. I didn't see it, but I trust it.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Either way, I only have two of you here to sign it. But I was waiting for the applicant to review and get back to me with their legal counsel's comments, and that hasn't happened until tonight. So I'll table a signature.
This time, we're not in any time constraint.
There is still, it's close, but there's still time.
Can you maybe, just in case?
Yeah. 5/8 to the 16th. 5/8 to, yeah, we're good.
You sure? You just don't want to see any constructive approval?
Forty-five days we're looking at. That'll be the 35th day.
Okay. We did the two discussion pieces. We're on with these two. Mr. Chairman, we'd like to proceed tonight. Okay with the board?
Summarize, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, so what's before us today is Total Outdoor for the construction of two billboard signs on the mall property. As members know, there were two presentations over the course of the last year.
Excuse me for a minute. He, this is not a special permit.
No.
It doesn't require a full vote.
That's correct.
That's the reason why I want it, just that you want it for present, just to ensure.
So the bylaws were passed at a recent town meeting and they've been enacted into our bylaws. So what we did, what this is, it's a site plan review. It's not an approved and denied for a use, it's a design review. It's a use that's now by right because of the new bylaws. But there's some items to button up as far as the site plan, and that's why we're here today, and that's why the applicant's here, so.
Go ahead. Present your name for the...
For the record, Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Longden. I'm an attorney with the law from the Vatican Uyghur and Worcester, and I represent Total Outdoor Corp. and Auburn Mall at Auburn LLC, which is the Auburn Mall. With me tonight on my far left is Drew Hoffman from Total Outdoor and Chris Bastian from Simon Properties, which owns the Auburn Mall, and Chris is the manager of the Auburn Mall. This is, as Mr. Benoit indicated, this is a request for site plan approval for two double-sided billboard, digital billboard signs. This should be installed at the rear of the Auburn Mall, adjacent to the Mass Turnpike and within the regional mall overlay district. As was indicated, as a result of amendments that were enacted, adopted by the town to the bylaw in November of 2017, this proposed disuse at this site in this zoning district is now a use allowed by right, subject to site plan approval and also compliance with the additional, the other amendments that were made to the bylaw governing installation and operation of billboards within the regional mall overlay district. The proposed installation is shown on the site plans that we submitted. There should be three sheets of the plan. Basically, the, should have this plan. It shows the mall and also shows the proposed locations of the two signs. So what we're proposing is installation of two signs. They, the designation of a, looks like a V on the sign, adjacent to the Mass Turnpike in two locations, shows where the proposed location of these signs, two signs would be. They're approximately 1,000 feet between the two signs in terms of distance, actually 1,002 feet. And this is the site, there's one sign that is, we refer to as the westerly sign, another sign that is the easterly sign. If you go to this area in the Auburn Mall, you notice that there's a very steep embankment at this particular location that comes up to the Mass Turnpike. Under the terms of the amendments to the bylaw, when they were adopted in November of 2017, there is a restriction on the height above the grade of the Mass Pike at this particular location, as to what height these signs could be. The site, the sign that is the westerly sign, furthest to the west, is, extends 80 feet above the grade of the Mass Pike at that particular location. And that is, that is within the limits of the height restriction that's in the amendments to the bylaw with regard to the height of the sign in this district. With regard to the easterly sign, it extends 65 feet above the grade of the Mass Pike at this particular location. So both signs, signs are compliant with the height. So one is on the west side, they're 80 by 48. No, the size of the sign itself, the size of the, what is, what would be called the viewing board?
Five copy area.
Yeah, it's, that's 48 feet wide by 14 feet tall. What I'm talking about is the height of the structure, the structure that holds the sign.
I'm saying that's a big sign.
So 80 feet is a big sign. This is height. This is height. So it's 80 feet, 80 feet high, and the other one is 65 feet high. And also the, as I mentioned, 1,000 feet apart. The, the technology that's going to be used on these two signs in order to minimize overflow or excessive brightness from these signs is what is called sightline LED technology. We demonstrated this in conjunction with the town meeting at which the amendments were adopted for this particular situation. And the sightline LED technology has automatic dimming on, for these signs, these are the signs that are, are digital, they're going to be, have faces to them. They are designed to face and present advertising to travelers on the Mass Turnpike, and that's it. They're not intended to be seen from any other roadway other than the Mass Pike.
So Bob, just in, sorry if we don't forget anything. The V that you show here is where each sign will be in the, like on the westerly one, the cars coming eastbound will view this left-hand side of the V and the cars coming westbound. And the same with the other side.
Right. It's a V sign like this with, this is a face, this is a face over here. That's how they view it.
I thought someone explained, too, that then, you don't, you don't see them, even though you might be a mile away, you're not seeing it. I mean, all I'm thinking of is distraction, if somebody just keeps staring at it and going off the road or something like that.
Right. If I could answer that question. So the easterly sign is angled towards the street. So the street, so the folks from, I'm going to put you the name, Packard Oak, they're 30 degrees off of the angle of the...
Off central street.
Off-center, and that's going to be, it'll be black. It'd be like a privacy screen.
It's only when you get almost on top.
It's when you're on, it's when you're on the turnpike only.
And as you get to a certain point on the pike, it goes black as well.
Exactly, yeah. Okay. So the amendments, the new amendments to the bylaw also included several sections of requirements or restrictions on the use of billboard, billboard signs in this location. These two signs comply with all of the enumerated requirements and limitations that are set forth in the amendments to the bylaw. And in particular, for example, the signs will not show any advertising involving marijuana, tobacco products, or adult entertainment. They have to comply in all respects with all of the state, some of the Massachusetts requirements with regard to billboard operations. They, the size of the signs, again, are compliant with the limitations in state law as well as in your, your bylaw. And the signs cannot be located within 300 feet of any residence, measured from the base of any, of either of these signs to the nearest lot line of a residential lot, and they comply with that requirement as well. There are also limitations with regard to the way in which the messages are displayed on the, on the billboard in terms of timing. First of all, there's no what is called flash technology used, there's no movement of the sign, of images on the sign, there's no flashing on the sign. There are static images that change every 10 seconds, and that's what you'll see on the sign. It's very similar, if you go up 290 and you get past Holy Cross right at 146, that's a digital sign, 48, 48 by 14, and that's what you're going to see here.
Through the chair, that one doesn't have sightline technology.
It doesn't. That doesn't.
It is on the Mass Pike.
This one does, so it'll be far less noticeable and intrusive to drivers. Now, we did request certain waivers with regard to the application. Waivers of information that would otherwise be required to be shown on the site plan. We were requesting waivers from site topography, site lighting, landscape plan, and proposed, proposed system of drainage calculations, as well as calculations of the volume of earth to be removed, if any is going to be removed, because there's, there's not going to be any, any earth removal here. These signs will be placed into the pavement or through the pavement that exists now. And they're also, there's not going to be any new drainage system installed, there's not going to be any landscaping installed, no additional sight lighting, and there really no, is no... no, it's no impact on site topography. This is the parking lot to the mall. The extent of the building coverage and open space as a percentage of the lot was also something we were asking for a waiver from. And also putting the names and the lot numbers and names of property owners that are, that are adjacent to the site, because those names and lot numbers are on the Certified Butters List that was submitted with the application. And we are requesting, if you might, to give us a waiver from the requirement placing that information on the plan. That's basically it. In addition to that, we attached with the application a negative determination that was issued by the Conservation Commission on February 28th, 2018. We had filed a determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission to see whether there would be any determination of, whether there were any impacts from this project on a buffer zone area that is adjacent to one of the signs. And the Conservation Commission came back instead, said there'd be no adverse effect in the buffer zone area as all work will be on the pavement. Excavated materials could be placed in an appropriate container, disposed of off-site according to the engineer, and therefore a negative determination was issued. So there's no, no negative impacts from what we're proposing. The other issue that's involved with this application of this installation is the fact that in the amendments to the bylaw, there was a provision inserted having to deal with the applicant and the owner of the sign providing the town with a surety with either a bond or some other deposit of money that could be held by the town and used to pay for the costs of removing the sign and the remediation of landscaping at that particular location, if in fact the town was ever forced or required to remove the sign. Now, the reality is that the likelihood that the town would ever have to spend any money or ever remove these signs is extremely remote, because number one, under state law, under the state regulations, if a sign is in violation of state regulations and is required to be removed, first of all, the owner of the sign has the primary responsibility under state law to remove the sign. If the owner doesn't remove the sign, then the owner of the land on which the sign is stationed or is stalled has the obligation to remove the sign. There is nothing in the state regulations that says that the town has an obligation to remove a sign. So the likelihood of the town ever having to remove the sign or spend money to remove the sign is extremely remote.
And it's currently would be on mall property but bounded by the Mass Turnpike Authority?
It's bounded by the Mass Turnpike Authority, but it's on the mall property. So the mall is the, the mall entity is the owner of the land on which the sign sits, and Total Outdoor is the owner of the sign. So Total Outdoor is first in line for responsibility for anything that happens with this particular sign. And if for some reason they don't do that, then the owner of the land has the responsibility to remove the sign.
So the bond is currently 100, are we allowed up to 150? What's the...
Well, we had, we had submitted a, under the, under the ordinance or the bylaw, excuse me, the applicant was, was required to provide estimates of the cost of removal to the town engineer for his review, which we did. I don't know whether you received these or not, but it might be. And then there was, and then there was some further detail as well, breakdown of how that calculation was made. But this structural engineering firm, Redfern Engineering, provided an estimate of what the removal costs would be at this time. And also, the zoning bylaw requires that within that estimate of cost, there be some indication of an inflation factor that would affect the future cost of, of removing the sign. So what the consulting engineer came up with was an estimated total cost of $28,000 to remove both signs with an inflation factor of 2.04%, which he notes could be accumulated and applied to calculate future cost estimates. Now, I shared this with, with the town planner and, as well as Mr. Coyle, and as well as Ms. Reagan for their review. And I spoke with Mr. Coyle, and he indicated that he was satisfied with these numbers.
The 28,000?
28,000. He was satisfied with the 2, the 2.04% as being an inflation factor for calculation of increased cost.
So that would add on every year, Bob?
It would. But I asked, I also asked him, I did, again, since there's very little likelihood that this money is ever going to be spent to remove this sign, because the town's not, doesn't have any legal liability to remove this sign. I asked him whether in fact, instead of increasing the amount of the bond on an annual basis, could we do it every three years? And he said that was all right with him. And I don't know whether that was communicated to you or to...
Through the chair, it was, it was communicated to me, and I support Mr. Coyle's recommendation.
So we do it every three years? That's it, you know? So it would be 28,000, 2.04% escalator, so at the end of the three years, it would be that times 28,000.
It's cumulative.
Cumulative, yeah.
It's compounded. And then I brought a copy of the bond, the form of the bond that we proposed providing to the, to the town, which Mr. Coyle also reviewed and formulated, he found it acceptable. And one of the things, this is a, this is a fairly generic form of bond issued by an insurance company, but at my request, if you go down to the paragraph that begins in the middle of the page, "Now therefore, the condition of this obligation is such," I had them insert specifically the wording that the obligation would include all costs of removal for either or both signs and all expenses or damage to it caused by Total Outdoor's noncompliance with a breach of any laws. But specifically mentioned that this was for all, that this bond would cover all costs of removal for either or both signs up to the limit. In this case, this bond is for $30,000, not $28,000. So the initial bond that we would be presenting is a $30,000 bond.
Still at the 2.04% escalator?
So we would ask your approval of that arrangement with regard to, with regard to the bond.
Matt, that's what they're offering? What, was there any other specific asking, request by the town? There be more than that or anything like that? That's what...
Now I just lost my notes. It's here somewhere. Oh, the next, next point I was going to raise is that also included in the application was a copy of the donation agreement that has been proposed by Total Outdoor to the town with regard to this project, which says that if they, if they go forward, are able to implement and erect these signs, and if, once they are operational, that Total Outdoor would donate, make a voluntary donation to the town of $1 million over a 20-year period, beginning with the date on which these signs are operational and able to take advertising and, and display advertising.
So it would be paid in 20 increments of $50,000 each?
Except that Total Outdoor is also agreeing that they will accelerate the first five years of payments, so that the first payment would be for $250,000 at a lump sum to cover the first five years. So...
On the sixth year, you'd begin the $50,000 a year.
Yes, correct. And so that...
And that price doesn't have an escalator or anything, it's just...
No.
But in addition to that, Total Outdoor is also going to make available to the town
public message time or public service messages on these billboards for a maximum of 20, 20 hours a month, five hours per sign during a month. And in addition to that, they're also going to donate to the town a separate small digital sign, four feet by eight feet, that the town can place anyplace you want and use, again, for public service announcements in the town. That'll be your sign. So we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have about...
So the bond that you proposed is 30,000 with a 2.04% escalator, it'd be paid in three-year increments, every three years? Okay, that's...
It doesn't get paid. It gets...
It just increases in the event that we ever do have to call on it, which would be, as you said, remote. So, and that's what you're fine with, and I think it seems very adequate. John?
Just a question, how do you use a foundation for an 80-foot pole?
I'd have to review the plan, but we're doing a spread foundation, so I'd have to review it again, but my guess is it's probably going to be 10 to 15 feet deep. We're going to pour cement foundation, spread footing, fill it back up, and repave it.
I was just curious.
But all of them are constructed from the engineer's specifications, so they're all have the proper wind loads and proper building coats.
I'm glad you mentioned the wind loads, because we talked about that with the bylaw and stuff. I think it even came up in this meeting at one point, so like, how does it deal with strong winds, wind loads?
Side flexes. It has to, which here.
Wendy?
I'm good.
And I'm good?
So, Mr. Chairman, there were requirements and conditions for site plan approval as part of the bylaw that was provided by the applicant already as part of their application.
The only, excuse me, the only question...
I didn't have one question. Did we include in the bylaw that there was no advertising for alcohol either?
No, that was defeated on the floor. I think I, a member introduced that as a, as an amendment, and that was, that was, that did not pass.
On the waivers, number six, Matt, the budding properties with map and lot numbers and the name of the property owner. As you, I think you said, Bob, they were included in something else.
Well, they're on the Certified Butters List, currently submitted.
We don't... But for the requirements and conditions of site plan approval, I mean, they're in the bylaw, we can leave it at that, or you could just transport those right as the conditions on the decision. It's one of the same, so. I don't have any other conditions that would differ from the bylaw. When the bylaw was created, it was essentially like doing site plan review. So a lot of it's very consistent with what we would ask for anyways. And in addition to any other standard conditions that we have, my, my biggest question would just be related to construction hours. I would expect that it would reflect the same hours that the mall has for a land item.
The waivers, we can vote on them all together?
Yes.
If the board so chooses. What's your thoughts on them, Joe?
It's fine, I just got another question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but I'm looking at the breakdown for the manpower and stuff. Is the pole 80 feet and 60 feet, and the sign sits on top of that?
No.
Total height is 80.
Total height's 80 feet.
I was wondering about the 60-foot man lifting it. So they're all set.
Wendy?
I'm all set.
Okay, do we have a motion to waive, to approve the waiver?
You need a motion to close first.
First, I have a motion to close the front of the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close while we're hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve the waivers.
I'll make a motion to approve the waivers as stated.
Second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion on, on the application.
Motion to approve.
What's the condition?
With conditions that you will include in the decision, or are we going to go over those now?
Just for the standard vote, I just say, if it's a motion to approve, just state it as a motion to approve with conditions and...
Motion to approve the conditions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote.
Standard conditions typically, if you want to discuss...
Construction.
Construction hours. Now, we were looking at the, permitting those for 7 to 3:30, and even later, and now, this doesn't have surrounding residential butters. I think we even granted construction hours to the mall that went just close to 6:00 PM. I think they were even later, so. Could have been 5:00. But either way, it was later than normal because there's no direct butters for this.
Are you going to have to work off the pike at all to do this?
No.
Just all from the mall side?
Yeah. What I'll do is, okay, so, presents me with a little challenge. But if 7 to 5 is what we want to do, I'm going to write that down now.
7 to 5.
And other standard conditions are, abide by all approvals and conditions from state agencies or other town boards, departments, commissions, develop in accordance with the approved plan, site lighting.
It's already there.
I don't believe we're moving, removing any trees?
No.
Okay. So that's conditions. One, two, and three. And then I would just, the requirements, conditions of approval under section 4, 5, 10, 5A, I would just copy these right onto the decision. It's already, it's already done, so. It's just to make sure that it complies. I mean, the bylaw does one thing, if it has a condition, it's just an extra document, but you don't have to pull your bylaws to see, to approve, you just read the decision. If that works for you guys. I don't expect it to be any different.
Number three?
Good. So that's what I'll do. Thing, you guys in a hurry? Because I'm going on vacation tomorrow, and I come back on the 11th. I can have a signature page at least ready, or at least a draft decision ready that Monday when I get back. I'll try to put it together, I'm going to try to put it together tonight before I even leave, and then circulate it. But at the very least, it's going to get signed at the next meeting, whether it's a signature page or a complete decision, and then I'll hand it off to you for review before we attach the signature page.
Is that all right with you?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck. Appreciate it.
You have to do the waiver one.
Which would be 7:21? Packard Oak bonds and this one with us go together, because we would be resetting depending on what they say. But the 7:05, there's a 7:05 public...
You could just read the bold print, you know, the results.
The applicant, 7:05 applicant was Leith Azuni requesting site plan approval. This has been asked to be continued to June 12th, 2018 for the applicant. Was a 7:10 applicant, Longwood Development, requesting site plan approval, continued to June 12th also, 2018, at the applicant's request. Was a 7:15 PM applicant, Mossad Family LLC requesting modification of site plan approval. That's been asked to be continued from May, it was continued from May 8th to 2018, and we should continue that to the same June 12th.
Yes.
Because you haven't heard from them, they did not.
As far as getting the continuance form in advance tonight, no, but I have been speaking with their engineer and they've been making progress.
Is there any time? Is there any time constraint that we're here? Okay, and then seven, so we get a vote to do this. We have a motion to, we got to open this public.
I would just ask that the 705, the 838, you could take that vote without motioning to open.
Which one?
The Leith Azouni.
Okay.
So make a motion to continue the hearing to June 12 for Leith Azouni?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The second one, we run into a time constraint. I would recommend opening that hearing first and then making a motion to continue.
Longwood Development?
Yes.
Make a motion to open the Longwood Development?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Continue to June 12. Do we have a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the meeting to June 12.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just for the members anyways, that one's under peer review and the applicant would like to respond to some of that peer review stuff before they bring it in.
This is the Longwood?
Yes.
Okay, under Masad Family LLC, do we have to open that?
No.
No, we can just make a motion to continue to June 12.
Make a motion to continue to June 12, Masad.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
720 PM applicant is Packard Choke Farms, and they want to be continued to June 26, 2018. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue Packard Choke Farms LLC to June 26, I mean.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we have a 720 applicant, Auburn Planning Board, request the whole of public hearing on Packard Choke Farms. This is continued, we would want to continue that, Matt, to the same date?
Yes.
June 26. Do we have a motion to continue the 721 Auburn Planning Board applicant to June 26?
I'll make the motion to continue that hearing for the applicant for Auburn Planning Board for the potential recession of definitive subdivision plan to June 26.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Schwab, you said you made your decision?
Mm-hmm. I have the decision ready.
Yet it's not. Can y'all leave him tomorrow?
Yeah.
You haven't got?
I could grab two signatures tonight, but it just doesn't make sense.
Well, is it easy if we sign it and then so we don't have to come up when you get it all done?
Yeah, you're recused, so.
Oh, okay.
And I voted no, so.
Yep. No, this is the one that you voted for.
Oh, all right.
I'll wait.
Yeah.
So I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.